Good afternoon, everyone. This is a regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees El Paso Community College District, and today is May 22nd, and the time is 4:30. And this regular board meeting is being held in the Administrative Services Center located at 9050 Vicount Boulevard, Board of Trustees Room A 200, El Paso, Texas. Viewable through the EPCC YouTube channel, refer to the link HTTPS colon slash slash WWW dot YOUTUBE DOT COM slash user slash GO EPCC. So this meeting is called to order. And Ms. Dr. Penley, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Wear the uniform and understand how to say it.
I don't understand what you mean.
Hopefully, all of us understand. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Exer.
Here.
Mrs. Robles.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez.
Here.
Dr. Graham.
Here.
Ms. Nahera and Mr. Hagerty are running a little late. They'll be here later.
Okay, so we have accord.
Item 1.4, approval of minutes. This includes the March 28th, 2024 Regular Board of Trustees Meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye. So, welcome to all guests and staff members. We appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Item 1.6, open forum. There is nobody who signed up.
Okay.
Item 1.7, presentations by individuals, groups, and organizations. Item 1.7.1, Dr. William Serrata, college president, will recognize individuals who have retired from El Paso Community College.
Dr. Serrata.
Dr. Graham, members of the board, I'm always bittersweet when we have retirements. Want to honor the individuals who have done great work for the institution, and at the same time, we don't like to lose good folks. But the only one I'll be recognizing this evening is Mr. Richard Rick Labato. You all know him well. Richard Labato has been Executive Director of the Physical Plant at El Paso Community College for the past 16 years. He has 33 years of experience in facility, design, operation, and management. Mr. Labato holds a Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering Technology from New Mexico State University. He earned his certifications in Energy Management and Educational Facilities Professional. He's also a graduate of the Association of Physical Planet Ministers Institute for Facilities Management emphasizing leadership, maintenance, and construction. Mr. Labato also served as the Vice President of the Texas Association of Physical Planet Ministers, or TAPA, from 2016 to 2017, and President of the Association from 2018 to 2019. He started his career doing contract work at Los Alamos National Laboratories as a project construction inspector. He later moved on to performing contract facilities designed for Sandia National Laboratories, then accepted a position at White Sands Test Facility as Supervisor of Maintenance Facility -- Maintenance. Finally, he worked at NMSU in several positions before becoming Director of Design, Utilities, and Construction. It was in December of 2008 when he applied for and accepted the position of Executive Director of Physical Plant here at El Paso Community College. Mr. Labato explained this as a summary of a long journey before finding home, finding a home to settle into. His grandmother used to tease him that he was working his way to Mexico, and he said, quote, "Well, Grandma, I never made it all the way, but I did find a second family here at EPCC in El Paso." During Mr. Labato's 16-year tenure here at EPCC, he solidified the department and provided the leadership, expertise, and organizational skills that allow the department to grow. He provided guidance and oversight on the campus expansion from 1.7 million square feet to the 2.2 million square feet that resulted from the master plan. In addition to overseeing the campus expansion, Mr. Labato and his team have emphasized the importance of maintaining the existing facilities, due in no small part to the assistance from the EPCC Board of Trustees and the administration. Mr. Labato and his team have been able to keep an emphasis on reducing deferred maintenance and addressing mechanical, electrical, and roofing issues throughout the district. Mr. Labato, we'd like to express, would like to express his gratitude to his excellent staff and all they have accomplished as a team. He would also like to add a big thank you to the financial and administrative team for all their continued support. He will miss everyone here at EPCC but looks forward to new experiences with his lovely wife Socorro and nine grandchildren. Mr. Labato, we thank you for your years of service, dedication, and leadership. We wish you a happy, and healthy, and long retirement. Congratulations, please. All the boards would want to greet you. So come on up, please.
Thank you, sir. We will listen while we're here and go too far.
I know the board wants to acknowledge you as well.
Thank you all for all the support. We couldn't have done anything without. I will miss you all. The best board I've ever worked with. I shall leave that. Have a new boss.
For everybody here, I just want to say is the only Aggie on this board. I truly miss this guy, and there's Dr. -- see, Aggie, that's real Aggie.
He should have said that rather than the other way around.
And Dr. Serrata, we're losing those people with New Mexico State experience, and I think you need to put that in the advertisement publication.
Sir, I just hired a project manager from New Mexico State.
All right.
Did you hear about it?
I did.
And you're not the only Aggie on the board.
I am the only real Aggie on the board. Okay, everybody, here it is. Thank you. I would like to add that as an ROTC graduate, I had that discussion about being a real Aggie with a room of 10, five other A&amp;M graduates, and they convinced me that I really am not the end of the world.
Mr. Labato, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, ma'am. As Dr. Serrata likes to say, it's a bittersweet moment, because this will be the last time I have the honor of addressing the board and the people that attend these meetings. You know, it's really been quite a journey. I remember some of the first times here where I would make mistakes, refer to Las Cruces. It's a long time, 16 years. Ruben here will attest that the first time I came, I sat on that chair, and he has never let me forget that that is his chair. So, Ruben, it's yours again. End of time. But I do want to say thank you to my excellent staff. You know, we did accomplish a lot of things, but it's not a one-man show. Never could have done it without the teamwork and the support of not only my staff, but the entire EPCC community and the board. You guys are a major party. I mean, we had the funding when we needed. We've really chipped away at deferred maintenance, and I hope we continue to do that. I do have the plans still laid out, and I know it'll be presented to you guys. I hope we continue to follow it. Once again, thank you for everything.
Well, don't be a stranger, sir. You'll come back.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes. Yep. Yes. Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, the Faculty Association, and the Student Government Association.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, before I start, I would like to address Ms. Sanchez on your tremendous election victory. However, I see that you're resigning from our board. I thank you for being a part of the board. You've always been a strong advocate, ally of the faculty, and on behalf of myself and the faculty, we thank you for that. You will be missed.
Thank you.
And I wish you all the best in your new endeavors.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Greetings, board members, Mr. President, Vice Presidents, Deans, guests. Unfortunately, I find myself standing before you once again regarding my good friend Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick. The Lieutenant Governor and his political party have often touted themselves as the champions of small government, no mandates, non-interference, and local control. Yet, in practice, do the complete opposite, as we saw in the last legislative session, and apparently are about to do the same in the next session. Dan and his minions are now targeting faculty senates as the focus of their ire. In his 2024 interim legislative charges on page nine, under Higher Education Committee Faculty Senates, Dan proposes to, quote, "review and analyze the structures and governance in higher education focusing on the role of faculty senates in representing faculty interest to higher education institution administrations. Make recommendations to establish guidelines for the role and representation of faculty by faculty senates at higher institutions in Texas." Sounds like a lot of political double-talk way of saying that Dan and his political party want to interfere in and control faculty senates for their own political purposes. So much for the assertion that Dan and his party are for small government, no mandates, non-interference, and local control. That alleged policy is nothing more than a big lie. To once again paraphrase the greatest political document of all time, the Declaration of Independence, Dan and his cronies want to make faculty senates dependent on their will alone for the tenure of their offices. And to paraphrase President Ronald Reagan, Mr. Patrick, tear down your big lie. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. What Ms. Nahera has joined the board.
Thank you.
Section 1.8, communications. Item 1.8.1, discussion and review regarding data, statistics, policies, and general information related to El Paso Community College by the Board of Trustees.
Dr. Graham, and members of the board, I'll ask Dr. Julie Penley, our Vice President for Research Accreditation and Planning, to present data to the board with regards to the Noel Levitt student satisfaction inventory results. Dr. Penley, please.
Thank you, Dr. Serrata. So before I get started, I do want to acknowledge and thank Mr. Art Gonzalez, one of our institutional research data managers, for providing much of the information in this presentation. So this is one of three national surveys that the college administers on a rotating basis, and each of those three tap into a different component of the student experience, and they focus on different student populations. The Noel Levitts focuses, as the name implies, on satisfaction with their experiences. The other two surveys that we administer, the CSE and the SENS, focus on engagement with the college. So with the Noel Levitts, they also address all students, with the exception of dual-credit early college and ESL. The SENS survey focuses on entering students only, what we traditionally identify as first time in college. So again, different nuances and different focus to each of the surveys. This particular survey does address student satisfaction along seven different metrics. I know if you look at it, those are six bullets. They do distinguish between recruitment and financial aid as two separate entities. This survey is administered in the fall, and so we just completed the administration just before the winter break. Noel Levitts provided communications on behalf of the college. We did not reach out to students directly. But Noel Levitts emailed our 16,000-plus students that did not fall into those categories of dual-credit or ESL, inviting them to participate. Unfortunately, the timing is perhaps not ideal, given where students are in mid-November to mid-December in their EPCC experience, but we didn't really have any control over that administration window. Noel Levitts did send periodic emails during that month period, and we had a total of 1,200 students participate. I do want to call out that 7.5% participation rate. It could certainly be higher, but considering this is an online survey near the end of the semester, this is totally in line with other experiences with administering online surveys. In fact, the college is very excited to see a 5% response rate for online surveys, whether it's to employees or students. So we're happy with 7.5%. It could certainly be higher. We recognize that. So once the survey window closes, Noel Levitts analyzes the responses and categorizes them and provides summaries back to us. So it's a relatively light lift for our IR staff to compile that information. A little bit more about who Noel Levitts surveys in their assessments. Our particular assessment that our students completed last semester is specific to community and technical colleges. As part of the analysis of the data, Noel Levitts disaggregates by region. Some of the other surveys that we participate in, SENS and CSE, compare us to schools of a like enrollment pattern. We're categorized as an extra-large college for those surveys. Here, we're not interested in the size of the institution, we're interested in geography. So these are the 14 states that comprise the southern region, according to Noel Levitts. The schools, or the states in purple, rather, are counterparts in the Saxiose accreditation region. The other three states, Arkansas, Oklahoma, and West Virginia, coincidentally make up states in the HLC accrediting region. We had a total of 35 community colleges that we were being, well, 34, being compared to. We are the 35th, and a total of 27,200 students participated. So I'm going to present selected results based on four different categories or four different buckets. This is a pretty extensive survey, almost 100 questions plus demographics plus open-ended responses. So again, that 7.5% response rate right before finals, we are grateful for our students taking that time. But the first bucket I want to focus on tonight is the overall student experience that our students reported, and comparing our students' responses to those of the students in the entire southern region across those 14 states. And you can see the numbers for yourself. Our students are slightly more satisfied than the entire body of students that participated. And the next survey result that I wanted to focus on is how our students are rating their experience at the college, again, a metric of satisfaction. And when you look at meet or exceed expectations, 94% of our students felt that EPCC did that for them. Coincidentally, 94% is the same percentage as the overall response rate for those 12,000 students. The ratio of better versus met expectations is slightly higher for our students. And I guess the million-dollar question that we ask ourselves in any situation, if you had to do it all over again, would you? And most of our students said probably yes, which is, again, very good news, trending slightly higher than students in the entire southern region. So the second category that I wanted to provide, it's not a comparison set, it is just demographic or descriptive information, what our students said about EPCC and their decision to enroll. We've got two slides here. The first is, students were provided a list of nine factors that may or may not have influenced their decision to enroll at the college, and these were the top five out of those nine that students said, yes, this was a factor for me. Perhaps not surprisingly, in this economy, that the most frequently responses had to do with finances in one way or another, whether it was the financial aid that we provided to them or the overall cost of tuition. Academic reputation, always good news, that that was a deciding factor for students. Geography, number of locations that we provide, and personalized attention prior to enrollment. So this is a nod to all of the work in Dr. Maya's area with recruitment and admissions. And the second piece of information from this bucket has to do with, it was a forced-choice question, was EPCC your first choice in pursuing higher ed, second choice, third or lower choice? And not surprisingly, given the wealth of programs that we offer, most students, more than three-quarters, said EPCC was their first choice. The next category of data that I wanted to present is a little bit more complex, so I want to take some time to help orient you to what you're seeing. These are comparing, the heart of the Noel Levitts is satisfaction. So satisfaction is a two-sided coin. What were your expectations? How satisfied were you that the college met those expectations? So there's a lot of information on these next six slides. The temptation might be to go across row by row and to compare the top rows in each slide with one another, but I think it's more advisable to look at the colors and to go down the columns rather than across the rows. So the first, with that caveat in mind, the first question had to do with aspects of students' sense of belonging. It's something we take very seriously at EPCC. We do a lot of work in instruction, student services across the college to make sure students feel welcome here. 76% of students say, yes, this is an important component of my college experience, a sense of belonging. And then, in terms of the right-hand side of the table, whether EPCC met the students' expectation, almost 70% said, yes, they were satisfied that EPCC accomplished that. I should mention that for important, neutral, and not important, as well as for satisfied, neutral, and not satisfied, they are shades of gray in each category. So for example, under important, response options were very important or flat-out important. Under neutral, sort of that middle region, somewhat important, neutral, somewhat unimportant. And then not important, the rest of the spectrum, not important or not important at all. And the same on the right-hand side. I'll also point out that we have different numbers in each cell, so again, it's a reminder that we can't necessarily assume that everybody that felt that a sense of belonging was important also responded in one category or another. So now that we've gone through the how-to-read the table, we've got a few more tables. The college shows concern for students at individual, as individuals. Again, students rated that as a very important factor or as an important factor in their college experience, and most students were satisfied that EPCC met their level of expectation for that component. College staff are caring and helpful. Again, the majority of students said that it was an important consideration and that the college met that level of expectation for students. And it is an enjoyable place, enjoyable experience, rather, to be a student on this campus. This is a generic language across institutions, so whether students were focusing on their campus, Mission, Via Veda Day Trans Mountain, we don't know, or if they were looking at the collective EPCC experience. Nevertheless, we see a similar trend. It is something that is important to students, and they are satisfied that we met that component for them. Students are made to feel welcome. Again, that sense of belonging, that sense of connectiveness, connectivity. 84, 85% students, yes, that is important. Almost 78%, yes, the college met that expectation. And finally, administrators are approachable to students. Again, majority felt that that was an important consideration, and a majority felt that they were satisfied with that experience. The last two slides that I want to provide in terms of results have to do with open-ended questions. As I mentioned, we had almost a little bit over 1,200 students participate. We had over 500 individual responses to open-ended questions, so there was a lot to go through and analyze. I am providing a couple themes that kept showing up again and again in those 500-plus responses. On the positive side, over and over again, we saw comments suggesting that they were happy with their decision to attend EPCC. Some specific examples on the right. EPCC helped me prepare and understand the next steps. Snaps to our marketing department. We had a lot of comments reiterating our message of EPCC is the best place to start and finish. A lot of those were verbatim responses. I wish I could have gone here right after high school. And finally, I would really recommend to start here at EPCC to achieve your goals and dreams, so very good news. Not only do students appear satisfied and glad of their decision to come to us, they feel a lot of affinity to their primary campus. Feels comfortable and safe. Love the Mission Del Paso campus. I love being a student at the Via Veda Day campus. My campus, which they referenced as Trans Mountain, is amazing. So earlier I said, or I showed you slides that suggested about 70% were satisfied with their college experience here, and about 94% said that the college met their expectations, which is not to say that there's not always room for improvement. So some of the comments we received were offering constructive feedback. And two examples of those themes that came up, general or sometimes And two examples of those themes that came up, general or sometimes specific improvements that students felt that we could make. There should be more activities in the school and more student groups. Cleaner air vents, more scholarships for GPA merit. That last one gave me pause, and I wasn't sure whether to include it or not, because I wonder if that scholarships for GPA merit might work better under suggestions for improved communication, which is always something that we work with at the cabinet level, in our divisions, in individual departments. But comments related to communication came up with some regularity. I would like to feel more involved in my school, I just do not know what goes on. I feel that I wasted so much time because I didn't know who or where to go to. And I think staff should be more approachable and clear about the procedures, which suggests maybe a student got bounced to a different office or a different set of processes that they needed to continue. So I know that this was a lot of information to prevent, to provide in a relatively brief period of time, so here's some of the take-home messages. Students reported being generally satisfied, that we met the expectations they had for us. The open-ended questions, again, there's a lot to go through. Cabinet has seen the full list of responses. It is something that aligns with some other evidence we've seen about what students like and would recommend improving on at the college, so we're going through those lists. And I want everyone to know, the board, the audience, anybody watching online, these surveys are not just administered and then they sit on a shelf. We do take these results to heart, particularly students' voices and students' open-ended responses. And so, again, we talk about these responses in Cabinet, we make plans, identify actions that we could do to address some of these issues. And also, not only at Cabinet, but many of us have leadership teams within our division. We talk about these results with our teams. And college-wide, we have our EPCC Pathways Group and our Student Success Core Team that are also looking at these data and how to improve our services in that regard. And with that, I will take a breath and go backwards, review any other slides, answer any questions you might have.
I think I have a comment. I think you indicated there was like a sample set of, gets down in the weeds a little bit, thirteen thousand, and a sample size of seven and a half percent, response of seven percent, seven and a half percent. I think for a sample size, I mean, an interview set of thirteen thousand, seven and a half, typically, you, online responses run around two and a half to five percent. Anything above five percent is good, and so I think your seven and a half percent reflects statistical viability for across those. So in other words, your takeaway is that not only for that, but for each individual subcategory, these are real thoughts by real people that are, as best we can determine, really reflective of what's out in the real world. I think with that kind of, I mean, you said seven and a half percent, like it's not, but that's, that's larger than a lot of stuff I've seen here lately.
I agree. I think we can have confidence in the responses. We see consistent patterns. Anecdotally, I might equate this to, you go to a store or a restaurant and you automatically get a link to complete a survey. And who's likely to complete a survey? Somebody that's thrilled with their experience or somebody that wants to express their frustration in no uncertain terms. And the folks in the middle may not take the time, particularly, again, ninety-five questions, right before finals. And you see the drop-off rate in responses. We didn't always get twelve hundred responses to every single question, so.
But I think it reflects validity on expanding, Dr. Sodda, expanding faculty and administrative effort. I think this justifies making that a focus, really does.
Any other comments? Dr. Penley, thank you. This is very good information. Will it be eventually shared with faculty?
Yes, it is already shared in pockets with our Pathways Group and our Student Success Core Team. We do put our survey results, whether it's Noah Levitz, Campus Climate, CSE, on the institutional research webpage. Going back to improved communication, we could provide more direct communication that, hey, look at this website because here's the results.
And did the students have any incentive to complete it?
Just goodwill, and they were not given any financial or any other type of incentive to complete it.
Okay. I'm surprised you got that many to answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Section 1.9, Board of Trustees Business, Item 1.9.1, Discussion and Action to Accept the Resignation of Trustee Christina Sanchez from Board of Trustees and Any Other Related Matters.
Do you want to start? I'll start. Well, I'm so, you know, so sad to have to, can I talk? Yeah, is that okay? Yeah, okay, no, no, I was wondering if we wanted to do executive first, but I think we can do this, right? Yeah, so, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. But, yeah, so, have to submit my letter of resignation, unfortunately, comes with a heavy heart, don't want to do it, it's been so great to serve on this board, looked at options, my term would have ended at the end of May 2025, that is when the next election season is up, is next year, I believe the filing period would start in February, so really would have wished and would have hoped to have finished out the term. Unfortunately, I will be taking over pretty soon as the El Paso County Attorney, and so to avoid any conflicts or appearance of conflicts and for a lot of other considerations, I unfortunately have to resign from this beloved El Paso Community College Board. I have, of course, full faith and confidence in our leadership here, in this Board of Trustees, in terms of the decisions that will have to be made, moving forward in terms of who could fill the unexpired term. And so, any way that I can help or be of service to the Board, I will absolutely do so. And then, of course, to all the students, faculty, and staff, you know, I have a new role, of course, still in public service, a different role. We handle a lot of different matters, to include civil representation of our county officials. We also do juvenile prosecution, we handle adult protective services cases, child protective services cases, protective orders, we have a mental health services unit, a lot of, lot of different avenues in which we serve this community. One of the initiatives that I would like to do, and I think a large part of that has been because of my service to the Board, is really starting to look at an internship program for students at a public service level, whether it be at the county attorney's office or somewhere in the county, to want to get them interested in running for public office and getting them interested in these types of public service jobs. And so that is something I'm looking at. Hopefully, down the road, there'll be an opportunity to get students from the community college to come and serve in that role. We've already had paralegals serve in internship capacities at the office, and it's been a really, really great opportunity. But this is definitely not a goodbye, this is definitely a, how else can I be of service to this community, but of course, of service to this amazing organization of the El Paso Community College. And I really feel that those avenues and those doorways will be open. And I'm really, really just thankful for the time that I've been here, everything that I've learned, the people that I have met, my door will be open, and, you know, I hear and I keep up with what's happening at the legislative, at the legislative level, and I share those sentiments and I share those frustrations. We've already seen DEI go out the door and what that means, and I really do think that as a community, in terms of the values that we think of as a community, we all definitely need to pay attention to figure out if this is the road that we want to go on. And we have to take a stand, and we have to be vocal, and we have to show up and offer our voices, especially at that level, and to protect and to preserve the values that we have here at the Paso Community College. So with that, it is, again, with a deep and heavy heart. My effective date of resignation would be...
It would be upon acceptance of the resignation by the Board of Trustees. My recommendation in light of that would be that the Board take up the action item after executive session to avoid any immediate resignation.
Okay, all right, sounds, sounds great. So that's, that's all that I have to say. So thank you all so much, and thank you for your grace in letting me speak. Thank you.
Well, on behalf of the Board, we hate to see you leave the Board, but we're excited that you've got plans that will include the college further down the line. Congratulations again, we're so proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else comments?
Dr. Graham, I would just share that we obviously want to honor Ms. Sanchez and her service to the Board. We will work with her office as well as with the Board to schedule that, depending on what the Board decides in executive session, makes the announcement afterwards. But we want to honor Ms. Sanchez and her great service to the Board, and so we will ensure that we work with her office as well as the Board to do so.
Thank you, thank you all so much. We'll take it up.
Ms. Sanchez, thank you so much for everything you've done. You've helped not only the college, but the community as a whole, and I look forward to seeing what you're going to continue to do in public service.
Thank you, thank you all so much.
Ms. Sanchez, I want to thank you so much for all that you have contributed and continue to contribute, not only to EPCC, but this community as a whole. I want to wish you the very best, because I know that you're going to do a fabulous job in your new position.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that, thank you.
Not much to add, except congratulations.
I thank you, Mr. Muckler, thank you so much. Thank you.
Section 1.10, Board Reports, Item 1.10.1, Treasurer's Report, No Action Is Required. This includes Item 1.10.1.1, April 30, 2024 Financial Statements. Item 1.10.2, President's Report, Item 1.10.2.1, Dr. William Serrata, College President, will update the Board of Trustees and Audience on recent events that have transpired at El Paso Community College.
Dr. Graham, members of the Board, I'd like to begin my report by congratulating the class of 2024. The Spring 2024 commencement was held on Friday, May 10th, with almost fifteen hundred graduates walking the stage. I want to congratulate, congratulations to all of our graduates and our appreciation to all the faculty, staff, and administrators who made this happen. Special thanks to Dr. Maya and his team for leading the commencement ceremonies, and I believe that our team has a video.
I am William Serrata, and I have the privilege to serve as President of El Paso Community College. Welcome to our Spring 2024 El Paso Community College Commencement Exercise. Buenas tardes, damas y caballeros. Bienvenidos a la ceremonia de graduación de Primavera 2024 de El Paso Community College. On the recommendation of the faculty and the authority vested in me both by the State of Texas and our Board of Trustees, I confer on each of you your degree.
It's truly an honor to address you this afternoon. You know why I say that? Because you and I share a lot in common. We've gone through some things together. We both have some very unique experiences and hard work under our belts. You have an asset that is different from other classes. You have the power of the choice that you made and when you made it to enroll or return How successful you are depends on how well you treat each other and respect each other. Big decisions are in you. Big decisions lie ahead. Big opportunities lie ahead. But remember that an opportunity you have to grow and excel is not an opportunity to step on others, but rather an opportunity to step up and make room for others. Success is never about revenge, gloating, showing off. Success is not about eating all the ice cream at the buffet. You know you're going to end up sick. Success is about bringing people with you so you can all enjoy and share the opportunity. Tonight, as you celebrate with family, share your plans for your future and discuss the choices you are ready to make. Families, ask your graduates what their values are and tell them how you've seen them grow. Listen to them, support them, and encourage them to face the choices ahead with the same strength and determination. The Hanos, graduates, El Paso is with you. We see you and we're so proud of you. You are the stewards of this community and we are counting on you. We're ready with opportunities for you and can't wait to see those Hanos in action. You will, you are who will, we will see running businesses, hospitals, banks, schools, city council, local or state or Congress. You give us hope. Do great things with eyes wide open. Congratulations and have a great evening.
Shin as an honorary graduate of El Paso Community College. The stove was designed by retired EPCC Fashion Technology Faculty Member, Ms. Trish Winstead, and is dedicated to the memory of Eugene...
It was a wonderful video, wonderful day, as always, that's what we all work for, is to get to commencement, see our students cross the stage. Operation College Bound was in full force these past few months with faculty, staff, visiting multiple high schools within every college, with every school district in El Paso County. This important outreach effort is an important partnership with UTEP, brings EPCC's Recruitment and Student Services Department to local high school campuses to help advise on continuing their education and helping them register for the summer and fall semester. At OCB, high school students meet with the Admissions Department for course information, youth student orientation services, financial aid, first-year experience, counseling, and testing services. Dr. Heather Wilson, UTEP President, and I held a press conference at Bowie High School's Operation College Bound event to highlight our institution's partnerships and to remind our community that education and earning some sort of degree or certificate is necessary to be competitive for the jobs of tomorrow. Operation College Bound wrapped up on May 4th with Tejano Day at the Mission Del Paso Campus with the theme, "May the Fourth Be With You." Thank you, Dr. Amaya, Dr. La Chica Chavez, Mr. Talamantes, and their teams for finishing up Operation College Bound with a big success. A special thank, thank you to Brienne Jimenez, Trans Mountain cashier, David Rodriguez, Junior Systems Administrator, and Belo Castuita, Executive Office Manager in our office, for spending part of their Saturday at Mission Del Paso in Star Wars costumes. The Borderland Book Club, through the EPCC-UTEP Humanities Collaboration and in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club at Borrego Elementary School, hosted its final event of the year, which included a literacy board gallery, a presentation of the experience and findings, and a panel made up of student participants. Family, friends, and colleagues joined the event, which took place at San Elizario. Thank you to Ms. Donna Muñoz, English Associate Professor, for organizing the event and supporting the student fellows. Papagayo hosted Chicano poet, José Hernández Díaz, for... for reading, book signing, and open mic. With support from the Spring Arts Festival and the Paso's Program, attendees received free copies of his latest book, Bad Mexican, Bad American. José read from his work, took questions from the audience and signed books. I want to thank EPCC ASL interpreters, the EPCC Writing Center at Valle Verde, the Tejano Tribune, the English faculty and deans, and all the students who read in public for the first time at open mic. Ms. Margie Nelson Rodriguez, English professor, was recently appointed as co-chair of a national committee. The committee is sponsored by the Modern Language Association, or MLA, which partners with the Association Departments of English and the Association of Language Departments, ad hoc committee on the academic workforce in languages and literatures. The committee comprises eight faculty members from across the United States and three MLA representatives. The organization identified Ms. Nelson Rodriguez for her work at their Joint Leadership Institute in 2022. She will assist in the study workforce workload and working conditions, issues in languages and literatures, identify good practices and model programs, and make recommendations to the broader MLA community in furtherance of strategic priority of advocacy. In 2025, she will present at the MLA Annual Convention and attend a committee retreat at MLA Headquarters in New York City later this year. Congratulations to the Tejano Film Festival for celebrating its 11th anniversary at the Alamo Drafthouse in East El Paso's location, hosted by the EPCC Film Club. This year, the festival had a record number of submissions with 38 films submitted through the EPCC Film Club and the EPCC Video Production Classes. I'm pleased to announce that this was a standing-room-only event in the Alamo Theater, and many, many audience members had to rotate into the screening to support their films. An open show displaying all films was screened at the Valle Verde Campus earlier this month. Valle Verde Theater students assisted the El Paso District Attorney's Office where producing a public service announcement. The DA's office was impressed with our students' professionalism and commitment to the project. So it was a great opportunity and learning experience for our students, and one they will not forget. Great job to our students and thank you for representing EPCC so well. Silvia Moreno Garcia, author of the New York Times bestselling novel, Mexican Gothic, was hosted at UTEP and sponsored by the Humanities Collaborative at EPCC and UTEP, as well as Papagayo. EPCC students, staff, faculty, as well as UTEP students, alumni, and the El Paso community attended the event. Free copies of Gods of Jades and Shadow and Mexican Gothic were made available. EPCC Professor Jorge Gómez introduced Ms. Moreno Garcia to a packed auditorium. After her presentation, there was a Q and A moderated by Vanessa Zuniga, where aspiring writers and literature majors asked Ms. Moreno Garcia questions about her work, inspiration, as well as the challenges that she has faced. During the pandemic, the EPCC Instruction and Student Success Team initiated the Student-Faculty Engagement Project during the summer of 2020. The goal was to reach out to EPCC students and to let them know that they were not alone, and we were here to help. The engagement team began the Tejano Virtual Events, or TVEs, series in the fall of 2020, and they've continued that work every semester to build community. The TVE series informs students about services and opportunities. EPCC staff and faculty stepped up to help promote and present topics on student services, support, mental health, wellness, cooking, art, tutoring, scholarships, advising, and many more helpful and fun issues from fall 2020 through the spring of 2024. On May 15, the Engagement Project Team invited everyone who has helped make this project a success to celebrate this EPCC Collective Student Engagement Effort at the 12,000-plus TVE Viewer Celebration. It was an honor to provide welcoming remarks to the celebration. Congratulations to the Engagement Team on more than 12,000 viewers. The Student Government Association attended the annual Texas Junior College Student Government Association State Convention in April, hosted at the AT&amp;T Conference Center at the University of Texas in Austin. During this convention, SGA officers attended workshops, listened to various speakers, and formed part of the region and state committees. They also submitted their work for evaluation, which was awarded third place in the Scrapbook category and Be Kind to Your Mind for Mental Health Week in the Event of the Year category. The TJCSGA region elected El Paso Community College as the host school of the Region One Conventions for 2425 Academic Year. EPCC SGA also visited the state Capitol as it held its final General Assembly. Thank you to Ms. Nadia Rivas for leading the Student Government Association. The EPCC Contract Opportunity Center Apex Accelerator held its Annual Procurement and Contracting Symposium earlier this month at the Administrative Services Center, one of the premier networking events for far west Texas and southern New Mexico. The symposium was supported by over 226 attendees representing prime contractors and federal, state, and local agencies. The event allowed agencies and contractors to reach regional businesses and inform business owners of the free technical assistance provided through EPCC's Contract Opportunity Center. Thank you to our Director, Mr. Pablo Armandares, and the Contract Opportunity Staff for organizing this successful event. The Fashion Club organized a fundraiser called Room 2007 to raise funds for competitions. With a grant from the Student Government Association, they raised over $2,000, allowing three students and one advisor to travel to Dallas. The show featured over 100 unique handmade garments. EPCC Fashion, the first in El Paso to host such a show. Kudos to the Fashion Club and those involved for a successful show. Three fashion students, Daniel Rodriguez, Yasmin Atkins, and Amna Abushihara competed in the Fashion Group International Competition and placed in the top 5%. Daniel won a $2,000 scholarship and an exclusive internship with a New Orleans-based designer. Yasmin and Amna received honorable mentions for their designs in streetwear and cocktail. Congratulations to our fashion students. The Fashion Promotion Class collaborated with the Museum of Cultural Arts Division and the El Paso Museum of Art to produce El Paso's first Selena Fashion Show at the Market at Camp Cohen. The event featured sustainable looks using found items, scrap fabrics, thrift stylings, or deadstock fabric. The class invited community members to display their creative works with EPCC TV providing coverage and EPCC marketing taking photos. Great job on a successful event. Dr. Manuela Gómez and Ms. Isadora Stowe, EPCC faculty members, were invited to present their collaborative research as part of the Speakers and Issues Series hosted by Midwestern State University in Wichita Falls, Texas. The Libra Foundation, Times Record News, KCUU FM, NPR Radio, KFDX TV3, Prothor Jaeger College of Social Sciences and Humanities, and the Office of the Provost generously sponsored this event. Their public lecture, Sight and Insight: Exploring the Philosophical Dimensions of Visual Rhetoric, was held at the Dillard Auditorium. Drawing from more than six years of collaborative research, their work explored the philosophical implications of visual culture. In addition to their lecture, they led workshops for students enrolled in English, advertising, history, philosophy, and art courses. The Speakers and Issues Series began in 2001. The third Avance to college graduation occurred earlier this month. This graduation was a special event that recognized two additional parent groups, Parent of Teens Workshops and Proyecto Mama. The Parent and Teen Workshops were inspired by students in the first Avance cohort who wanted to parent their adolescents with a better and more compassionate understanding. Proyecto Mama, under the leadership of Rosie Flores, focuses on mothers as women, parents, and community members. Graduation provided an opportunity to showcase how these parenting groups have provided a pathway to EPCC for parents, specifically mothers who otherwise would have never stepped foot on a college campus. Special thanks to Ms. Roselia Galindo, Reading Professor, who helps coordinate these programs for EPCC. EPCC and UTEP's collaboration stem fuerte, presented their Spring 2024 Lunar Living Student Poster Presentation Awards at the AST. The interdisciplinary students creatively collaborated to help humans live on the moon. A primary effort of STEM Fuerte every semester is to teach in interdisciplinary systems thinking, lunar living module, and key architecture, biology, and engineering courses. STEM Fuerte faculty Nora Cavalier, Engineering, Elizabeth Preza, Biology, and Clark Myers, Architecture, teach students to view their disciplines from systems thinking or holistic approach by collaborating with students from other disciplines to help humans live on the moon. Students are organized by faculty into interdisciplinary teams, typically made up of two architecture students, two biology students, and two engineering students. Within each team, students choose to solve a problem or several problems associated with humans living on the moon. The winning group featured domes made from mushroom roots. And the winning team, Marcela Prieto Caballero, Christina Pérez, Allison Fajardo, Andrea Pérez, Monica Medina, and Jorge García. Congratulations to all the teams for participating. Rise to the Challenge Bridge Scholars and UTEP faculty members, mentors, Dr. Maria Álvarez, Maria Fuentes, Trevor Duarte, and Julio Francia, participated in a professional, a variety of professional research conferences, including the American Association of Cancer Research in San Diego, California, the National Council of Undergraduate Research in Long Beach, California, the Rising Stars in Cell Biology in Baltimore, Maryland, and the Virtual Biomedical Research Spring Conference. Students present, presented their research projects on cancer research and attended scientific presentations by prestigious scientists, including Dr. Carolyn Bertozzi, Nobel Prize in Chemistry for Development of Bioorthonical Reactions Used to Explore Cells and Track Biological Processes Without Disrupting the Normal Chemistry of the Cell, and Dana Boyes, External Information Technology Lead at NASA Headquarters. Congratulations to the Rise to the Challenge Bridge Scholars and Dr. Álvarez for this unique opportunity. Dr. Graham, that concludes my report. I'm happy to respond to any answer, any questions that the board may have. It has obviously been a busy semester. Very, very proud of the work our faculty, staff, and students continue to put forward.
I do have a question. Did you leave out something having to do with the president of the college receiving or being honored at an event?
Um, I don't recall, Dr. Graham. Which one?
The one where Mr. Hagerty and myself?
Yes, yes. That was the Avance, and that was the Avance event, and it was very well received. Certainly appreciated that honor. Thank you, Dr. Graham.
Oh, we're so proud of you because you were honored at that event. So, thank you. Any comments, questions?
Section, Item 1.11 Consent Docket. This includes Item 3.2. Item 3.2 Discussion and Action to Approve Full-Time Staff and Faculty Recruited in Positions Funded by Grants and/or Contracts.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Section 2 Administration, Item 2.1 Tasbe Local Policies. BG, CFE, DAA, DH, and FA are presented for first reading and information only.
It's only information, but I think Ms. Nahera and I wanted to later maybe meet with you and talk about some of the, a couple of the policies. Employee standards of conduct and which was the other one, Bonnie?
I think I got my question answered. I just misread it. So, I'm good.
Okay. But I'll meet with you. Just, thank you.
Section 3 Personnel, Item 3.1 Discussion and Action to Approve Full-Time Staff and Faculty Recruited in Positions Funded by the Institutional Budget.
Motion to approve? Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Item 3.3 Information Items, Resignations and Retirements. No Action Is Required. Section 4 Financial Services, Item 4.1 Discussion and Action on Waiving the Acceptance of Pilot Funds from the Housing Opportunity Management Enterprises Home to be redirected to the YWCA for the provision of daycare services to EPCC students in the amount of $1,028.42.
Do we have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve? Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Section 5 Physical Facilities. There are none. Item, Section 6 Curriculum and Instruction. Item 6.1 Discussion and Action on the Approval to Purchase from Anatomash Inc. Two Anatomash Table Convertibles in the amount of $205,810.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Item 6.2 Discussion and Action on the Approval to Purchase from Mama Va Inc. Five Lactation Pods in the Amount of $153,500.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Item 6.3 Discussion and Action on the Acceptance of an Apprenticeship Training Program Grant Amendment from the Texas Workforce Commission, TWC, in the amount of $197,912.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? No questions?
Dr. Smith may want to highlight those that worked on this. Dr. Graham?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Serrata, and board members. Certainly, it's always good when a grant gets increased. And so for our apprenticeship program, which falls under AVP premisesage, I'm not sure if he's, yeah, he's here today. He was traveling, but him and his team have worked diligently to acquire additional apprenticeship sites. And the state has increased the amount of money given to us as a result. So, thanks to them for the hard work, as well as our grants office, as always.
Is this going to be located in one area only, or?
I think there are two companies involved in increasing the apprenticeship program. I don't have a complete list of all the sites that we have, but we can certainly provide that.
Good. Thank you for working on that. Great job.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Section 7 Student Services. There are none. Section 8 Community Services. There are none. Would the board like to go into executive session?
Yes.
Item 1, Executive and Close Session. The Board of Trustees may conduct an executive or close session pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code for one or more of the following reasons. 1. Consultation with its attorney to seek or receive legal advice or consultation regarding pending or contemplated litigation or for any purpose authorized by law. 2. Discussion about the value or transfer of real property. 3. Discussion about a prospective gift or donation. 4. Consideration of specific personnel matters. 5. Discussion about security, personnel, or devices. Or 6. Discussion of certain economic development matters. The Board may also announce that it will go into executive session on any item listed on its, on this agenda if the subject matter is permitted for a closed session by provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Any vote regarding these items shall be taken in open session. Item 1.3.1 Discussion with Legal Counsel to Discuss College Security Measures Pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. Item 1.3.2 Discussion with Legal Counsel to Discuss Appointment of Trustee in Light of Upcoming Vacancy pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. The time is now 5:44, and the board is in executive session.
Okay. Good afternoon again. We are returning from executive session. And we are going to be...
1.9.
We're, we're on item 1.9.1. Discussion and Action to Accept the Resignation of Trustee Christina Sanchez from Board of Trustees and any other related matters.
And we've expressed our hesitation to do that, but we congratulate you on your new job.
Thank you.
And accept the resignation on behalf of the board.
And it would be effective immediately as of today. Yes.
Any questions? Any comments?
We don't have to take a vote on it, correct?
You do.
So, oh, do I make the comment now? So, I guess with that, just for the benefit of the public, the process that has been followed before, at least in the, for myself, the process that has been followed before, at least for myself and I believe for Mr. Exer, was that there was an application process for individuals that would qualify for the position. And so, of course, you have to live in this district. I live in District 4. I represent District 4. It just recently got redistricted. It is a pretty large area of land that extends from the Willows all the way to South El Paso, parts of Kern, Sunset Heights, until Riverside, a little bit of the Llavea area. So, information, staff has been directed to begin putting together an application packet, putting together information to submit via social media to alert the public that the application process is in place. No firm dates have been set, although it was really important to do it today so that you all can begin that process immediately. There will be a board retreat coming up. And so, we want to make sure that whoever is in this seat has the opportunity to apply and that this board, of course, has the opportunity to evaluate the qualifications. And I'll just add, on behalf of representing District 4, I really hope that individuals who have a good heart in representing that particular side of the community and, of course, the community college, really consider applying, looking for folks that may have a finance background, maybe even a legal background. Of course, education background doesn't always hurt. Those are not mandatory qualifications, but it's something to just encourage individuals so that they can just do a really, really good job in being an asset to all these additional individuals that I have had the honor of serving on this board. So, that's just all I wanted to add.
Ms. Sanchez, on behalf of the faculty, staff, and most importantly, on behalf of our students, we certainly appreciate your service.
Thank you.
We thank you for your service. We wish you nothing but the best in your new role. Please continue to keep up with the college and know that you have about, oh gosh, with students, faculty, and staff, about 30,000 friends.
Absolutely. Same with me. Please, please do. I'm here to serve this community and the college. Thank you.
Well, with a heavy heart, I make a motion that we accept Ms. Sanchez's resignation effective immediately.
I second the motion. Any more discussion?
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
I love that "aye."
Yes.
Sorry. You're like, wait a minute. No, no.
And with that, do we have anything else, Dr. Sarada?
Next board meeting, Dr. Graham.
June 26th at 4:30. June 26th at 4:30.
And the board retreat, we have scheduled for June 21st. It will begin at 11:30 a.m. and it will cease with dinner on the 21st. And then, on the 22nd, we will start up at 8:30 in the morning. We anticipate that we will be done by 1 p.m. on Saturday, the 22nd.
Okay. That concludes our board meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.